Okay, we will call this meeting to order. And Mr. Rullerson, will you do our education course, please?
Father, we want to thank you for today. It's been a good day. And as we come here this evening with a place of wisdom and understanding to take care of the business in a professional manner in Walker County. Father, we have a bunch of students here tonight that we need to honor. And Father, as we honor them, we'll follow the precept of your word. Because your word says, honor those to whom honor is due. And certainly, these students have worked very hard to attain what they have attained tonight. And it's only fitting that we follow your precept in our agenda. Bless these proceedings, bless this time. And Father, we give you the praise for all you do, which in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And Ms. Hardy, will you do our pledges for us, please?
Everyone stand, please. You can pledge to the American flag first. Salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Georgia flag. Salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
And we do need to approve the agenda tonight. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Are those in favor? And now we have special recognitions. Mr. Rains?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here tonight. Just a little bit of a tidbit of information. So we have the six o'clock meeting that finished a little early. And we have a scheduled meeting at 6:30. So the law will not allow you to start a meeting early. It will allow you to meet late, but not early. So that's why we had to wait till exactly 6:30. So I appreciate your patience in holding out and listening to the Miller's presentation as well before you got the recognitions. So 4H has been a huge growing component of our school system for, well, for as long as Ms. Casey has been doing this. She does such a great job. And her staff has expanded over the years, and they do such a phenomenal job. And so she's here tonight to talk with the board and with our community a little bit about the annual report. And she gave us a copy of that. Appreciate her giving us that. But also the Master 4H recognition. So if you'll come on up. And thank you for being here tonight and all the work that you do with our students.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Casey Hobbs. I'm the 4H agent for Walker County. This is Ms. Kelly Wilson, our 4H program assistant. And with us this evening are members of our Walker County 4H council. For those of you who may not understand how we fit with Walker County, allow me just a moment to explain. 4H has been a part of the university, is a part of the University of Georgia's Cooperative Extension Service, established in 1914 to provide research-based information from the college to the citizens of each county of Georgia. Walker County 4H is a partner in public education. And we appreciate that both Ms. Kelly and I are not only employees of UGA Extension, but also of Walker County Schools. So we thank you for that. We serve all youth who live or go to school in this county. Together, we've reached 1,217 students from first through 12th grade, last year meeting 61 monthly club meetings, based on standards-based lessons, including English Language Arts, Science, Civic Education, Financial Literacy, Life Skills, and How to Be a Professional. 4H offers more than classroom standards, however. If you ask most people, they link 4H with agriculture. And that continues to be true. Last year, we had 16 students participate in livestock events, showing cattle, lambs, goats, and hogs. We also had six students compete in the statewide livestock record book contest, including a statewide first place, second place, fifth place state winners. We have a variety of competition teams, including robotics teams. Last year, two of our three robotics teams qualified for the state championships. 4Hers compete on these robotics teams year-round. We teach wise consumer shopping skills with our consumer judging team. The junior team placed third at district this past year. And to ensure proper safety and handling of firearms, we educate 4Hers with our Project Safe Rifle Teams. Nineteen competed at the district and state level and one placed second overall at the state 22 match. 4H does not stop after school is out. We teach responsibility, independence, and leadership in a variety of camps, day camps, and conferences across the state, where over 108 students participated in last year. We continue to serve our community with the 4H Service for Seniors Project, Kids Day, collaborating with Rossville Reeds and the Jimmy Simpson Foundation, as well as helping to host our annual Walker County Ag Festival that just occurred this past Saturday. Youth learn to be well-informed and engaged citizens through hands-on learning experiences in 4H. This past year, Cheyenne Martin served as Vice President of the Northwest District 4H Junior Board of Directors. She also received the state award for her Leadership in Action project, providing snack bags for our local first responders. We had two 4Hers complete their year of work as Georgia 4H ambassadors, teaching Walker County about wildlife and STEM. These two also applied and received Level 2 Bronze Medallions in the State Key Award, as well as competed in the 4H Dean's Award Competition and won, earned second place in the State 4H STEM Dean's Award Competition. Fifteen of our members served as Georgia 4H Certified Teen Leaders, with nine going through the certification for the first time and five deciding to go through it again. These teen leaders complete volunteer work, both in the community as well as 4H events, camps, and activities. We could not do our 4H program without the countless hours of work from our 16 adult certified volunteer leaders, who do not only serve here in Walker County, but serve throughout the state. Our premier program is 4H Project Achievement. In this contest, 4Hers from 4th through 12th grades may compete on county, district, and state levels. Students choose a topic of their choice to learn more about and present a demonstration about their topic in front of their peers. Last year, we had 621% in their classrooms. Fifty-four Cloverleaf 4Hers, that's a lot of fours, presented at the district level, with 83% of them placing in the top three at the district level. Starting in 7th grade, we began to teach them resume building as portfolio, as a portfolio of their experiences and work for a year. And theirs are submitted as half of their presentation score. Last year, we had 10 students compete on the district level for grades 7 through 12, with 80% of those placing in the top three. You may remember from years past, we recognized our first-place winners at this board meeting. However, since I began in 2006, the number of first-place district winners soared to just a few, to 24 this year. So if you can imagine, 24 kids and their parents, we would fill up this room. So therefore, we have decided to move this to more of an annual report of what we do and to recognize our state winners going forward. Today, I do want to honor Grant Madison. So Grant, if you'll come forward. Grant placed first on the district level. And in July, he competed at State 4H Congress in Atlanta, where he was judged on both his presentation skills, portfolio resume, as well as interview skills. He placed first at state, where he has now earned the title of Master 4Her. This title is similar to earning an Eagle Scout Honor. So we want to congratulate Grant.
I'm not here to stand, and then when everybody comes up, we'll get all of them.
As you can see, 4H offers a wide variety of opportunities for our young people to learn, explore, and achieve, including several of our council members that are here today. So you'll kind of see a lot of their honors around their necks. Some of them brought them, some of them didn't. We thank you for your continued support of 4H. So thank you so much.
We're gonna have all of them come up, and we'll get a picture across the way.
Can we get one with just Grant first?
Oh, well, no, sure.
And then we will honor everyone.
You go right ahead. You get right in the middle of the board there. There you go. That's perfect.
Let him do, let him have his.
Okay, it's a big group. Okay, right here on three. One, two, three. Let's get one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. And so our county council members who are present are President Jocelyn Putman. Grant is our first Vice President. Our second Vice President is Gregory Hobbs. Our Secretary of Secret Love is here. Community Relations Officer Cheyenne Martin. Junior Activities Director Addie Suddeth. Competitive Events Director Brendan Madison. Hospitality Director Mike Gardinger. And our at-large directors include Maddie Price, Kately Phillips, and Robert Mopé. If you're shorter, get in the front. Squeeze in. Come here. Come here. Here, you move a little forward. There you go. They're gonna make you get in. Come on, Kelly. I'll let you stand.
Okay, right here on three. One, two, three. Let's get one more. One, two, three. Stay where you're at, because there's people behind me. So y'all can get in the center.
They're lighting. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
So extremely proud of their successes and obviously continued success as we go forward. And just the program as a whole, I know those ladies do a fantastic job. And so thank you for being here tonight and parents that came with them tonight. We appreciate what you're doing. The partnership is just amazing. And so we hope your children continue to excel, just like they're doing now. So thank you so much for what you did. Our next recognition, I'm giving a little bit of the background because it's a little unique on the recognition we're gonna give. I'll ask Mr. Mosgrove and Ms. Nichols if they want to come on up. We are a part of the teacher initiative across the state of Georgia. It's called Teach in the Peach, appropriate. The Teacher of the Year, a couple of years ago, Kristi Todd came up with this, went across the state, developed it for a few years, and then started this program, working with colleges and universities about their teacher ed program, and trying to attract more folks into education back in the state of Georgia. Okay? So we have this year 55 brand-new teachers across Walker County. So we're going around thanking them and doing a couple of special things for them just to say, first of all, thank you for teaching in Georgia. First of all, thank you for teaching. That's a huge responsibility, and so we appreciate that. And choosing the state of Georgia, and more specifically, choosing Walker County. And so we're working closely with them. Now, Mr. Mosgrove is going to talk about some teachers that some of them fit into Teach in the Peach. But these folks, all of these folks have something in common. And I'm not gonna steal his thunder. He's gonna talk a little bit about that and these particular teachers at Gilbert. So, Mr. Mosgrove, thank you.
I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come up here. And I want to start though, because how awe, how great it was to look back at the kids back there. And you're all high school or higher, so I don't, or middle school or higher. So I don't know that I got them. What do you do? Are there any Gilbertators in the back? Anyone want to do it? One, two, three, four? You want to know some of these names that come up here. What we do each and every day is for you. But we cannot forget what we are up here, and that is teachers. And when we look back and we look at recruiting our teachers and finding our teachers, when we look back there and see that whole backdrop, when we look at our teachers. I know in my career here, I can look at Mr. Middleton's oldest, when she was a tiny little five-year-old coming with her handmade outfits to school. I can look at Ms. Hunter's young lady and what color Converse she was wearing and what particular day the school was. When we're teachers, we pick up on everything. I'm so blessed tonight, though, to get to honor teachers who started in either pre-k or kindergarten at Gilbert, went all the way through the fed schools, Walker County School System, came back small-town to teach where they first started. I'm gonna talk about each individual as they walk up, just a little snippet. Monta, just a little snippet of everyone. Because you know what? When we started this school year, it was about teaching. I asked every one of them, the entire staff, Ms. Nichols, I said, what are you, you're a teacher? What are you, you're getting to teach? You're teaching, you're a teacher. What does that mean? So I will start with our most senior, now Mr. Chase Horn. Mr. Chase, please come on up here. Mr. Horn has been at Gilbert. He is part of our community. He is our collège teacher, but he has taught 4th grade, 5th grade. Mr. Horn, you probably look back along that wall and see some of the former students that went through Gilbert.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Horn is a teacher. He's a teacher. I'm gonna go down that list. I believe our next will be Ms. Monta Hicks. Ms. Hicks, fifth-year teacher? Fifth-year teacher? Glad I got my math right on that. But you know what? She's a fifth-year teacher. And Mr. Richardson, I've learned more from listening to her teach her kids than I ever thought of. I mean, what a phenomenal teacher that she is. Next, I believe, if I go down that list. I've got two here. Ms. Nichols is gonna help me with one, and I'll tell you why in just a moment. But I'm gonna go with Mr. Landon Swanson. Mr. Swanson and I have a lot in common. Mr. Swanson, what, he doesn't know that my very, my very first job in Walker County was a 5th-grade teacher. And it's difficult to just drop in 5th grade, isn't it, your very first year? But you know what? Mr. Swanson has made more connections with our young folks. And I'm so proud of that young man. Next, I have a young lady. And I'm gonna put a plug into School Days, Mr. Rains. They did all of this for free for us. Ms. Nichols, will you help me with this for a moment? I was telling them about this program a couple of years ago, just wanting to honor this group. And so they were kind enough for our Hall of Fame. Well, I have Ms. Madison Pettigrew. Ms. Madison is not here today because she is currently coaching on the field right now, Miss.
Yes, we're 5-1 over Calhoun.
5-1 over Calhoun, that's right. So I'm gonna, and I'll ask Mr. Swanson just to help, and then Ms. Nichols, and then we'll come up. But I can't leave someone like that out. She is currently, right now, on that field, putting out. She's not only a phenomenal 1st-grade classroom teacher, but she's putting a little extra on that field right now. And lastly, our Teach in the Peach recipient. She was a young lady who, we were fortunate enough, Ms. Holloway, to allow her to student teach with us. Ms. Holloway worked real well with your program. Make sure you got to stay with us. Do your stewardage teaching. Ms. Mackenzie Reynolds, come on up. This is her first year as a teacher here in Walker County. And all former Gilbertators. Now, what I'm gonna do is, Ms. Nichols and I are gonna step out of this, but this is about you guys. So I'm gonna ask Mackenzie if you'll take the place. Because I can't let Madison be left out. But guys, I'm so proud of this group of teachers. I'm proud of all my teachers. But what a wonderful program to have, Teach in the Peach. And your launch program, we've got to get it going with our teach.
Yes, sir.
When we're sitting there doing that, we're pushing our teachers even at our launch program to give them back into our school system. Congratulations, Scott. This is about.
There you go. Okay, right here on three. One, two, three. Let's get one more. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming to teach. We appreciate that.
And I'll roll Madison. Roll her back up.
Madison back up. That's great.
So I was gonna say, this is the opportunity you'll have to exit, unless you want to hang around and hear more presentations. She's 4H, she's not even listening to me. She's rolling them out, isn't she? Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate you guys.
She's literally rolling them out.
You're not kidding, yeah. That's right. And then the last thing I'll mention, as far as recognitions, will be our South End Junior Board Member, Ms. Emily Bonham. Look at me. I got her the first time. She's been, she's been quizzing me. So we're excited to have Emily. She's giving you some information. But when we get to the business part of the agenda, she's gonna have an opportunity to share with you some things about Lafayette High School. And so we're excited that she's our first South End Junior Board Member. She's also a fantastic employee. She works for us here. And they're all taking a picture of you, so we'll cover that right after. And her bosses are here. She said, everybody's here but my mom, and the mom is the main boss. So she's, she's fantastic. So we're excited about her, what she's gonna share with you guys, just like we heard at the planning session from Regent. So excited to have Emily here with us tonight.
Okay, this time, we'll have items of information. Mr. Rains, do we have a superintendent's report?
Just a couple of additions. You guys have a copy of what I'm gonna title a After-Action Meeting Draft. I mentioned that at the planning session, that we were gonna be sitting down and having a conversation. This is still in draft form. I appreciate you guys just hanging on to that for the time being, until we have some additional questions answered. But I wanted you to have a copy of that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, just to see if you guys had any additional questions about the two policy revisions that are about to sit for the next 30 days. And that's gonna be IDFA, which is the Riley Gaines Act. The other was IFBG, which is our AUP revision. And again, I'll remind you of my plan to do the DOE by December, oh, December. Do the DOE by October 1st, no, not December 1st, October 1st. So we'll get that sent to them in draft form, because it won't be voted on yet by you guys until the planning session. We'll let them know that, so they'll have something on file. As soon as you, if you approve it on the planning session date, we'll get it to them prior to the 15th, which is the day that it has to be at the state board. So I just wanted to remind you guys of that. And you guys know we have an organization called BEAT. That's our BEAT partnership across the system. Ms. Margaret Lamb has always been the one that's taken care of that for us for years and years and years. Margaret retired. And so we're replacing her with someone I feel like is really gonna be a lot better than Margaret. Margaret's gonna come back and do it part-time for us. So I just wanted you to know that. She's the main person. She's been doing it for years. She loves that whole process. And so we're excited to have Margaret back, working in that capacity. I gave you a copy of a notice that we received from the Northwest P-20 region. This is a, one of our teachers at Stone Creek Elementary, Ms. Dawn Shirley. She's being awarded at their conference coming up as a, one of the Mentor Teacher Awards that they give out each year. And it's gonna be held in Atlanta. I've already talked to Dr. Shank, and they're gonna go ahead and get their reservation so that we can be there to support that teacher that night. Another great example of one of those teachers who have chosen Walker County and is doing a fantastic job, and now being given that opportunity to mentor other teachers. And so a lot of good things happening there. I know that Mr. Middleton had sent out a couple of questions. Didn't know if that's something you want to talk about now, if you want to wait till the new business portion. Completely up to you. I know that Mr. DeBey is at the safety conference. And so his only update was he had a picture of the combo field. And obviously, it's in black and white right now. And so we'll make sure it's linked into the agenda. So when you get back to your device, click on that. You'll be able to see kind of where progress is currently. And I think that was all he had, unless you guys have questions. And same thing with me. So I'll just open it up if there are any questions.
Any questions?
I don't mind going through the questions now.
Sure.
I just have to find where I sent it, because I didn't. So I guess the question I had was kind of more of last week when we talked about food services and we talked about styrofoam versus plates. And you mentioned that there was, it would be quite expensive to get some of that, those assets up and running. And so I was just wondering, you know, kind of what can we do? What's our plan to get those things going? And then, basically, what's the cost of the styrofoam in the last, let's just say, three years, three to five years? I know five years ago, we were in COVID, so I know that we did go to styrofoam. But just kind of what's our plan to get away from that? And then also, what's the landfill impact as far as how many, do we know of how many pounds that we've put in there? I know that's, do you get scale tickets when you get your bill? Well, and the reason I say that is, we get them at the plate, even though it is under a contract, we, because we have to, there's an initiative, right? Everybody has an initiative.
Sure.
To lower the land, the low carbon, to have a low-carbon footprint. So anyway, that's, that's the first question.
So I mean, I guess a couple of things, just sort of know about the timing of getting this prior to a board meeting. We haven't put together any costs or anything.
No, no, I guess.
Yeah. I know that a dish machine is somewhere in the neighborhood of $85,000. And so we have operational dish machines, I think, at just about every school. I know we have.
We have one school that's not, it's ready, it just is requiring some additional wiring.
Right. We found some electrical issues with this, so they're looking into that. The shift to styrofoam, and I'm as environmentally conscious as anybody, and I agree that there's probably an impact. I know that when it hits the transfer station, a lot of times, some of those things are separated, and they're using it for something different that doesn't go in the landfill. I don't know what our particular company does, and I don't know anything about the tickets to give us an idea what our local impact would be in the, in the landfill. I do know that when we shifted there, it was for COVID reasons. And then what happened post-COVID, you guys know this as well as anybody, employment. Finding people to actually be there. It takes two people to run the dish, dish room. And so finding two additional people to be able to do that has been probably the biggest hurdle, not necessarily trays or the process itself. Even though chemicals, keeping that balance of what that chemical, the temperature of the water, there's a lot of components with the dish machines, too. So I don't know if we've had, I know Chris Wallace, we had a conversation maybe middle part of last year when we were talking about the potential of picking several schools and trying to go back to the dish machines to see what that looked like, and so we could at least evaluate what that impact has been. But as far as real numbers, I don't know if we have anything. Ms. Coke, I don't know if there's anything you want to share with that.
The other part of that is, you've got to look at the amount of time you have for lunch. You've got a lot of schools that are putting a very limited amount of time on lunch service. And you've got trays. You don't have a tray for every student. You wash, and then you dry, and then you use again. There would be some schools, your two high schools probably would never be able to go back as fast as those schedules are running. And then you also got to help and think, you have one person out in the, in the kitchen, and you're gonna pull from that dish room first. That's the place you go. So you always have to have on hand what you need. And I gave Mr. Rains an example today. I had nine people out today in various schools. So therefore, you have to pull from that area. That doesn't require feeding your kids more than you would in doing the, doing the dishes. On your two high schools, Saddle Ridge would be three schools that I would tell you right up front. With the schedule that we're running, Regent serving over 800, 850 students in daylight shifts. Lafayette High School is not quite that high, but they do have a pretty good participation rate for lunch. There's just no way that you can keep up, especially if you've got one out. As Rains mentioned, it takes two people in the dish room. You've got somebody that has to scrape, and somebody that can run them through the dish machine. You've got to have a second person with clean hands to pull, air-dry, put away, to be able to start again. So it's a two, it's a two-person job in the kitchen and the end, basically. You possibly could get by with it in our lower populated elementary schools. That would be the only way that you would go around that cleanup process.
And that was the conversation we had at the beginning, was to look at a couple of elementary and put it back into place.
Yeah, it's 25 minutes between, and then a five-minute clean down would be sanitized tables.
So.
Four lunches at about 350 and 400-ish, give or take.
And again, the key part with us right now is staffing. Regent High School is working with six subs in the building and four employees that are returning employees. So it takes quite a bit of time to train those six people and get them by the farthest distance. It's not that we wouldn't like to. It's just right now, it has not been feasible for us. And if you, if counties around us, I think you're gonna find that a lot of them are using styrofoam. I've given you the numbers. I did not have a chance today to get the numbers on what the cost is. But again, as I talked to Mr. Rains today, you can look at the cost of the paper, and you can also look at the cost of an employee, what it would take for two employees to be there. And as far as it being, paper being more than employee, I think you're gonna see when I read those numbers, where it's going to be. Is it something that we enjoy doing? No, it's not. But you're only basically gonna see the old A, is the styrofoam, what we're gonna call the platter, that everything sits in, because you have to control exactly the amount that each DOD gets. So you're gonna see it individualized. You can't just put a tossed salad on the plate. You've got to make sure the tossed salad is exactly the ounces, all the, all the fixings that have to go in. So it's a lot of rings to follow.
Yeah, I don't want you to think I'm beating you up. Yeah, I don't want you to think I'm beating you up. I'm just thinking that we need to, I guess, if there's some way we can ever figure it out, right, in order to move that direction, is it that we overstaff in order to, I mean, obviously outworking manufacturing. And so overstaff is a great word, but it never happens. And so I just, you know, could we use kids that are in work base that are kind of between jobs or are not in jobs? And I know it's dangerous, don't get me wrong, but I get that, but so is ag. And so there's kind of this, that, and the other. It's just an opportunity to kind of go back to get away from styrofoam if we can, go back to trays, and it's kind of a, just a thought of what can we do down the road in order to get there, right?
And you make a valid point. Just remember, when you do go back to the trays that can go through the machine, they still have to be cupping that or plating that in something that's styrofoam and plastic because you can't just put it on the plate. It's not like Morrison's where you just, they go, you know, more, and nobody knows what Morrison's is, probably.
We're so controlled, we're so controlled by servings.
Yeah.
I was thinking of Piccadilly.
Piccadilly, that's what I mean, that's what I mean. Wow. I blew that one. But since you're still putting it in something that, you know what I'm saying? So you would lessen the amount because that styrofoam tray is actually a lot larger, but you would still have some impact based on what you're putting in to control the serving size.
And regulations have changed so much as what we have to put on that tray.
I would.
And so it's just, it's kind of a two-sided sword, there's just not a lot you can.
I'm just thinking long-term, right? How do we get away? How do, I mean, you know, the long-term effect, the longer it goes on, the less likely, it's just hard. I mean, I get the hard, hiring folks is hard. I get it, I get it completely. We see it every day at our facility hiring. I mean, we're tailing down and we're still trying to hire folks.
And you're not aware of how our people are hired. Our people working rarely forward, the only one that can work at hours is the manager. So you're working all these other employees, but you have to work if your hours are created or designed based on the number of years you serve. So, and there's a formula, it's a long process, you have to look at all of the things. And so I can't just say, yes, I'll hire three more people because it won't fit in with my state regulation that they have to stay within that window of hours. It's a puzzle.
Is this, is this the same thing other systems do too? They all?
Well, for instance, I know the comment last week was about the voting on the trays. We brought that up. There was, yeah, so there were six trays pictured there from counties all across the state of Georgia, and I think five of them were in styrofoam.
And this week, I just looked, five for five, all five trays posted in different systems. This week are all styrofoam.
So it's not a, it's not a Walker issue, it's a pervasive issue, and it's a multitude of things. Yeah, regulations, people, variety.
Michelle, help me understand. So on the old, what do they call melanite or whatever, you still have to put a container in there? You can't just scoop directly into the tray anymore? Is that?
I'm not going to say I couldn't, but when you're looking at the window of time that you have, we pre-portion those and we put them on a tray so students can select them very quickly, and that in that container is the correct serving size. So if we waited on a child to just, and scoop as we went, then we'd have that lineup, we would never get through high school kids if we did not have things out there ready for them to pick up. Because our process is allowing students to make choices, and that's a regulation we have to follow. So it's scooped up in these containers very quickly for them to take and place on, place on their tray.
It'd be like my wife picking out ice cream at the ice cream shop. We'd be there all day with those little spoons eating ice cream. Yeah.
You gotta taste it.
So, great questions.
I get it. Again, I'm not beating up, I'm just trying to figure out how do we get away?
Sure.
So that's the bigger thing.
Well, our goal is to continue to work toward that as a solution, so I want you to know that as well. Even if we have to test it out in some smaller elementary to see what that looks like, we'll continue looking down that road.
And then my other one, only email was just sports policies. You know, so I asked a question, an open-ended question on Facebook, and so got a blue million things, but a couple, I didn't realize Calhoun had a K-38 policy, and I'm not wanting, I'm just trying to think of a way to, I mean, it ain't about bringing, making parents come to pay game money, it's not about that. It's about things that have happened that I've seen in the last 10 years of going to football games, and it's not just, you know, a Walker County problem, it's a problem everywhere I've went to watch football games. And so I was just, the sports policy was, what can we do to kind of look at that to see if that's the direction we want to go as far as creating a policy where K-38, you know, you have to have a parent with you. So that was kind of the question last week. I know, again, I got Calhoun's and I printed that, or did that screenshot about Odair's one. So just something to think about. Obviously, you know, not, it's not going to be, I guess, voted on or anything like that, or even instituted like right this minute, but it's just something to look at future down the road is what I would like for us to look at. And it's mainly for football because that's your biggest crowd realistically. You know, basketball games, they're kind of pervy in anyway. They're kind of one given, but when football fields and drags and facilities, they're so large, you know.
Opportunities.
Opportunities for, yeah. And any other we can talk about.
Okay. Any other questions? I was going to say we could turn that school nutrition question over to Emily. She's smart, she could come up with a solution for us and save landfill. Put that on you to do this.
And Sue with the subject, anything?
Nothing, other than the picture, and you guys will have to look on that since we don't have access to it, but he was just wanting to show you progress of the combo field.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. We do have two individual action items. First is the resolution to establish the 2025 levy of tax. It is recommended that the Walker County Board of Education approve the resolution that establishes the levy of tax for 2025 at a net MNO mileage of 14.418. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Then we have policy revisions. It is recommended that the Walker County Board of Education amend the following policies: IBB, IBB-EI added to existing policy, and JBD created climate committees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor? We have a recommendation for consent action items. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Next on the agenda is new business. Mr. Willerson, I'm going to pick on you at that end. Do you have anything else?
No, I don't care.
Mr. Richardson?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Ms. Arden?
No, ma'am. I do not at this time.
Mr. Willerson? And I do not. Do we have any public participation?
Emily has some information that she wants to share with you guys.
Oh, this is true. Sorry.
And I think she passed out her information to the board, so you have something in front of you if she'd like to talk about that.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Rains, for inviting us to be junior board boomers and kind of just hear what students have to say about different things, and then also so that you guys can hear what's happening at our schools from students. So I'm the first one, but I'm not the only one from Lefebvre High School. We also have three other people, we're all going to be alternating, so you'll be seeing a new person every month. But this morning, we had a meeting with different club advisors and sports that are going on right now, and I just got a brief, just a little snippet of what's going on with them right now that I could share with you guys since they're not here. So with FBLA, they have the national gold champion chapter and the Georgia gold chapter of the year, and this was the fifth straight year qualifying for nationals in Anaheim, California. And they had national final qualifiers in social media strategies with Marvin Fuentes and Amelia Freeland, and then Leah Wiliford finished fourth in the nation for public speaking. So that was super big for FBLA. And then with cheerleading, they just attended the UCA summer camp at Kennesaw State, and they placed top two in all divisions with that being camp routine, sideline, and game day. They have three All-American cheerleaders, and Grayson Brewster was named the top 31 GHSA cheerleader of the year. And then she competed in Columbus on August 2nd. With CTI, we have a new organization at Lefebvre High School called CTI, which stands for Career and Technical Instruction, and we have recruited nine members and plan to take four to the Fall Leadership Conference in Columbus. Volleyball is doing very good right now with their record of 26 and 7 and their 8-0 in our region. They went 5-1 this past weekend at the Rocky Top Classic in Higgin Forge. Skills USA competed at nationals this summer in action skills, and Kaylee Garmoney finished 12th in the nation. And then they are getting ready to support LHS student Marvin Fuentes as he was nominated the state reporter in Perry. So FFA, they started with region rally with a lot of new members in Covington, and then 4H touched on this a little bit, but they had the Ag Festival last weekend, and that was a huge success with many people getting ribbons. And then October 1st, they have the Perry Goat Show coming up. ROTC, one of our junior board members is actually from ROTC, so she'll be able to share more information about that whenever she comes. But Color Guard is doing great. They just got started with the 9/11 tribute. That was their first presentation other than football games. They did over 100 events last year, so we're looking forward to see how many they do this year, but Raiders open up this weekend, and then the rifle team will get started soon in November. COSA is still working to recruit new members and kick off next week, and their Fall Leadership Conference will also be in November. And then this week is homecoming week at the high school, so there's a lot going on with that, just all over the place, but lots of fun. So then I'll move on to the chart I gave you with all the different academic data. You can start on the side that has the Lefebvre High School stats. So the first thing that you'll see in the top left is the CCRPI, which is an accountability tool that measures school, district, and state progress in terms of content mastery, progress, closing gaps, readiness, and it also takes the graduation rate into account. And you can see that we as Lefebvre High School have the greatest change with that being 18.6 in the last five years, and you can see how that compares to different schools in our area. And then the graph under that is the same information, but just kind of visually there for you. To the right, we have the ESCs from last school year, 23, 24. And the reason that's from the year before is because we haven't got all those growth reports back yet. But we are still working on that American literature with the standards changing. We're hoping that that will continue to just go up in the coming years. But then with algebra, biology, and US history, we're seeing a lot of success in Lefebvre High School compared to the state. And then the same with the graduation rate, we're seeing that continue to just improve, and then just keeping steady with the state and the district with that being 93.2 in 2024. Go up to the back, you can see algebra from 23, 24 school year, and that's for the same reason as we don't have those growth rates completely back from last year. But you can see that we have a 51% proficient learner and above, which is pretty consistent with those around us, if not higher than. And then the student growth, you can see in the chart on the top right-hand, and you can see that we're in the top quadrant for that growth and proficiency combined, so we're really proud of that. We're in the orange circle with the arrow pointing toward it. And then, and then the LHS AP scores, this is from last year, and so that shows how many students are scoring three or higher on that AP test, and I know we have the recognition a couple of weeks ago for that, but just wanted to reiterate that 3+ is a passing score, and so we're really proud to see how much that's really increased. It's at 90% now and it was at 27 just five years ago. So that's a really big deal, just 90% of students who are taking this test are passing them and getting college credit. And I would say for myself, like, that's a huge deal because I have over 40 hours, I think, by the time I graduate, and some of those are from doing enrollment, but some of them are from AP, so that's really exciting to me to just go ahead and get those out of the way, and they're a good challenge. So then on the right-hand side, we have the PSAT data, and it just shows that we're continuing to improve on those composite verbal and math scores. Yeah, we're really proud of those test scores, and we're just continuing to see those improve.
Emily, that was so good. It was so impressive. You can come and sit here, Emily.
Well, I just found out she's going in as a junior, so she'll be ready to take my position when I retire, so. She's awesome. Very impressive.
I know this, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask this or not. What are you interested in? I know you're a junior and you're taking these AP classes. What are you interested in going into? Do you know?
I'm actually interested in going back into education. I kind of veered away from it for a little bit and went towards pharmacy, but I'm back on it now, so I can go. I want to be a math teacher of a high school. Yeah.
Okay. Why is Ms. Arden here?
She's.
And I'm pushing for his dad, Ted, I forgot a little bit chemistry.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Emily?
I'm very impressed with your presentation, and thank you for joining us.
Of course, thank you for having me.
Once again, thank you. And so next, now we'll have you back, will we have you back? I know you said there were three of us in the rotation.
Yes, all three here, three times. Isaac Hamilton will be here three times, and then we have three others that are just going to be here once, so.
I let them make those decisions, and they meet, I'll talk about what they're going to talk about, and then they decide on who's going to be here. That way, if they're involved in some activity, sports or whatever, that they don't have to give up that time to be here, so it worked out really well. And they did all that work, so I just, I continue to be so impressed with our kids. They're just articulate and fearless in front of people, and that's hard to sit there and talk to adults and go over information that you're not typical of presenting, and she did a fantastic job. She always has a smile on her face when she comes to work here every day, and she's an asset to the school food service department, so she's going to be very successful in the future too, so we're extremely proud of her.
Thank you. Then also, I wanted to say with the five people that we chose, we tried to pick people that were involved in multiple things. I'm senior class president, hopefully will maintain valedictorian one more semester ago. And then I'm also in FBLA, junior rep, scholars, all the things. Isaac is also number one in his class right now. He's the junior class president. He's involved, plays soccer. He's involved in different sports and clubs, and then same with the other three, they're all super involved. So we tried to pick people that would be, would know a lot about the school and have, like, real involvement and interest in what's going on.
Right. Thank you. Do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, no one's signed up.
Okay. We do have a need for a second session for personnel. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? So we adjourn to a second session.
Parallel parking.
Yes. Thank you. There's anything else ready? Y'all just take them all ready.
Okay. We are back in motion. We have a recommendation of certificated, non-certificated substitute teachers and transportation driver attendant. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? And we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Now, all those in favor? We're adjourned.